Okay. It's 6:31. Call a meeting to order. Can I get a motion to approve of the agenda that may be amended? I don't really see anything here. All in favor? Aye. Approval of the minutes? The first set of minutes we have up is October 15th.
Yep.
That was Chris and I. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of October?
Yeah, motion.
All in favor? Aye. September 30th, the same thing, Chris and I. All in favor? Aye. September 26th, meeting minutes. Rob, this was a regular board meeting, not the other thing. Do you see anything on here? Motion to approve, September 26th?
Motion.
All in favor? Aye. September 16th, Chris, you and I again?
Yep.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. So that's it for the minutes. Next up on number four is the public meeting on draft environmental assessment, Killington Forward Initiative, otherwise known as the part of the Tiff district, right? So, this is on the agenda, and I believe VHB is spearheading this. And everyone who speaks, if you could just say your name, who's the person that takes the minutes, is going off of the record. Okay? I'm going to turn it over to you, Brad.
Start the presentation.
And he's sharing this.
There we go.
Here we are.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. My name is Brad Ketterling, the Director of Natural Sciences in VHB's South Burlington, Vermont office. I'm here to present a summary of the environmental assessment prepared for a component of the Killington Ford Initiative, specifically for roadway and municipal water supply improvements. This project is proposed to be funded by a grant from the Northern Board of Regional Commission, or NBRC, and a loan from the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, or DWSRF, which is coordinated by the Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation, or the DEC Water Investment Division. Per the National Environmental Policy Act, or NEPA, the allocation of federal funds to Killington requires that these agencies undertake a review of the project's potential effects on the environment. The environmental assessment, or we use the term EA, summarizes how that review was undertaken and its findings. So, here's a simple agenda for this brief presentation. We'll start with introductions and then proceed to an overview of the EA, followed by an opportunity for those present in person and joining remotely to provide comments. If you have any questions during my explanation of the process, please hold those to the public comment session later on. And lastly, we'll close by noting other avenues by which you can acquire information on the EA and to comment further. And to that end, I'll note that there is, for those of you joining in person, a comment sheet here, as well as a project summary sheet, and a sign-in sheet has been routed. So, let's get started then. Introductions, of course, from the town of Killington, we have the town select board present, as well as town planner Lisa Davis. I'd like to introduce others that are joining either online or in person. From the NBRC, we have Christopher Saunders, federal co-chair. Rebecca Darmaskin, grant attorney. From the DEC in person, we have Wynne Wilson, environmental engineer. From VHB, we have project manager for the roadway design and VHB chief transportation engineer Evan Dietrich, as well as myself. And lastly, from the defraying group for water system design, Tim Knapp, project engineer. So, as previously mentioned, the town of Killington is awarded a grant from the NBRC and a loan from DWSRF. And again, as I previously noted, NEPA requires that federal agencies assess the environmental effects of their proposed actions prior to undertaking what are called major federal actions. In this case, it's the expenditure of federal funds. So, the NBRC is funding road and water system improvements, and the DWSRF loan would apply to the water system component only. The class of action for NEPA compliance in this case is an environmental assessment, or an EA, as I mentioned. Generally speaking, this is the level of review and analysis applied when it is unclear as to whether or not the project, which we'll also refer to as the proposed action, may have a significant effect on the environment. Given the relative complexity and extent of the proposed action, an EA was determined to be the most appropriate NEPA class of action. To help streamline the NEPA review process, the NBRC is the lead federal agency, as it is funding both components of the project, whereas the DEC is acting as a cooperating agency. And lastly, I'll note that there is, beyond the NEPA review we'll be discussing, the proposed action will require a number, or will require, a number of state and federal permits and authorizations in order to proceed to construction. So, by the, this is by no means the only environmental review that this project can be subject to, nor the only opportunity for public input. Okay, so the EA process, this is a generalized breakdown of the contents of the EA and the overall NEPA process. The purpose and need, one of the first and key steps in the NEPA process is establishing the purpose and need for the project, and I'll describe those in a moment. Alternatives considered, at a minimum, an EA needs to evaluate the effects of the proposed action, sometimes also called the preferred alternative, against a no-action or do-nothing alternative. The effects of the no-action alternative are important because they're a baseline for assessing the potential and relative effects of the proposed action itself. A description of the proposed action, I'll provide a brief description and present some graphs, or some maps, I should say, showing the extent and planned design for the proposed action. Resource assessment, effects and mitigation, this is the meat of the environmental assessment, completing an assessment of the existing conditions in the project area and determining the environmental effects of the no-action and the proposed action alternatives. And it also discusses what mitigation measures may be appropriate or necessary to offset any adverse effects of the proposed action. And then, of course, importantly, public media and comment period, a key component of the EA process is soliciting feedback from the public through making the EA available online and/or, yes, by request, and we'll get into that at the end, and through this meeting. I'll note some details about the EA availability and the extent of the public comment period at the end of this presentation. And lastly, as part of the process, after collecting, evaluating, and responding to public comments, the NBRC and DEC will make a determination as to whether to issue a finding of no significant impact, otherwise known as a FONZI, which would effectively conclude the NEPA process, or if there's a finding of significant impact, there would be a requirement to prepare an environmental impact statement. So, from section 1.2 of the environmental assessment, the project's purpose and need, which is to advance fundamental infrastructure improvements in the town of Killington through the provision of municipal water services and the reconstruction of Killington Road to address numerous safety concerns and to accommodate multiple modes of transportation. The need for the project is twofold, related to the proposed, the two proposed components of the proposed action, the roadway and water system improvements. So, the town of Killington does not currently have a public water system. The impetus for the creation of this system is the planned redevelopment of the Killington base area and the construction of a new residential subdivision. This project was originally entitled the Killington Village Master Plan, is now referred to as the Six Peaks Village by the current developer, Great Gulf Killington. Also, several groundwater-supplied water systems in Killington area have been determined to have various water quality concerns. The most prevalent concern is the presence of per- and polyfluoroalkyl substances, also known as PFAS, which are present in seven public water supply systems at concentrations above the maximum contaminant level established under the Vermont Water Supply Rules. And of course, importantly, the new water supply system will also, of course, provide safe and reliable water for those that are not experiencing PFAS issues but are otherwise currently using groundwater-supplied systems and for future development. Secondarily, the need for roadway improvements, bicycle and pedestrian accommodations, generally lacking on Killington Road and especially within the project area, which currently has no designated bicycle facilities. Improving safety by addressing deficiencies in transportation infrastructure, there's a lack of consistent access management practices along the corridor, and this results in poorly accommodated and occasionally dangerous turning movement to and from unsignaled intersections. Responsible corridor planning, the proposed project is in line with the goals of the Killington Town Plan, to encourage planned growth and concentrated development in those areas of town that provide for higher density and can develop the necessary infrastructure to more readily support such development than other parts of town. And then lastly, surface water quality, there is currently no stormwater runoff collection or treatment system on the southern end of Killington Road, and cross-draining culverts are not sized appropriately for their watersheds and inhibit aquatic organism or fish passage. Okay. So, EA overview. The proposed action is a portion of the broader Killington Forward Initiative, as Jim was mentioning earlier, which is a multi-phase plan to construct critical public infrastructure and water supply infrastructure that will lay the groundwork for the construction of the Six Peaks Village and the construction of market rate, workforce, and affordable housing. The Killington Forward Initiative has a dedicated page on the town's website where more information can be acquired, and the map that's on the slide was actually taken from there. Generally, the town is proposing to undertake comprehensive roadway and multi-use path improvements along Killington Road from US Route 4, Vermont Route 100 intersection, south to the location of the Killington Resort, and along East Mountain Road to the location of the Killington Golf Course parking lot. It also established a municipal water supply system, the source of which will be drilled gravel wells in the Ottoqueche River Valley, east of US Route 4, referred to as the Valley So, zooming in on this project, the Killington Forward Initiative would be done in phases, and this EA covers portions of these phases, specifically the partial reconstruction of a, or partial construction, I should say, of a water supply distribution main, which is referred to in the EA as Contract 4, and I'll show a more detailed map of that in a moment, and Section 1A, which is also referred to as Phase 1A in the EA of roadway improvements, and we'll get into more detail on those now. The Contract 4 water distribution line would commence where the proposed, what's called Contract 3A transmission water main, currently under construction, intersects East Mountain Road, and on the map here, that's denoted by a red circle and the start label. The distribution water main would tie into the Contract 3 transmission water line, which carries water from the source, the Valley Wellhouse, to storage tanks on Shagback Mountain Mountain. Flow in the transmission line between the tanks and East Mountain Road is reversible along for stored water to flow downhill from the tanks to the Contract 4 distribution line and northerly. The distribution line would consist of a new 12-inch PVC distribution main to be embedded in roadways or road prisms for its entire length, extending north along East Mountain Road, where it would continue along Old Mill Road, Proposed Road H, to Killington Road, where it would then proceed north to terminate under this phase at Ravine Road. Contract 4 will provide stubs for future water supply connections along its length. The Phase 1A roadway improvements includes reconfiguring the southern portion of Killington Road from the Glazebrook Townhouses intersection, which is at top left, and just a note, north is to the left on this map, and proceeding south to a two-lane roundabout at East Mountain Road. It also includes reconfiguring East Mountain Road to the Grand Hotel, the Killington Clubhouse, and Old Mill Road from East Mountain Road to Road H, and the construction of a new Road H. Under current conditions, Killington Road is primarily a four-lane road through the project area. Under the proposed action, Killington Road would be a three-lane road, two lanes northbound and one southbound. Existing access points to Snowshed and Ravashead, Base Lodge parking areas will be reconfigured with future parking located east of Killington Road and north and south of East Mountain Road. Curb cuts on Killington Road and Road H would provide access to the future resort parking project. The southbound lane would have dedicated left-hand turn lanes for this curb cut and for new Road H, as noted by the white arrows on the map. At the approach to the proposed roundabout, the road would expand to two lanes, one for a left-turn movement onto East Mountain Road, or for the driver to return north on Killington Road, and a through lane to the south towards Vale Road. Accordingly, Phase 1A does not propose an increase in roadway capacity. Approximately 1.33 miles of road improvements would be carried out for Phase 1A. And note that the Killington Road improvements are on existing road alignment from the north to the location of Road H, where the road would then make a westerly curve off alignment to the new roundabout. In the EA, Phase 1A is broken into Phase 1A North and South. The transition point is shown on this slide by the red line and the arrows pointing north and south. The distinction is that the design for Phase 1A South dates all the way back to 2012, when it was developed to support the Killington Village Master Plan. This roadway plan has remained largely the same as when originally permitted, and has been refined with input from Great Gulf to dovetail with the Six Peaks development. Stormwater from both the surface of Killington Road and from future redevelopment of the Killington Resort base area will be primarily treated by two proposed stormwater treatment The main treatment practice is a stormwater management basin that will be installed south and east of Killington Road and south of Roaring Brook, outlined in orange on the map. The construction of this stormwater practice is actually not part of the proposed action, as it is not proposed for funding by NBRC. However, this practice, which would be constructed by Great Gulf as part of the development of Six Peaks Village, is required to be in place to receive and treat stormwater from the completed Phase 1A roadway and multi-use path. And for that reason, it actually is discussed within the EA. A second, smaller stormwater treatment practice is proposed adjacent to and east of Killington Road between Roaring Brook and West Branch Roaring Brook, and would be constructed by the town as a component of Phase 1A. Finally, we have culverts for both of these streams, Roaring Brook and West Branch Roaring Brook, that would be replaced along with a third culvert by the entrance of the Glazebrook Townhouses. Those three are circled in blue. Okay. So that's the overall roadway project. Typical roadway section is provided here. This slide actually shows a typical section for Phase 1A where it would include four lanes, which includes full-depth reconstruction, two 11-foot travel lanes in each direction, three-foot shoulders, a five-foot granite pavement buffer, and an eight-foot paved multi-use path, which would be installed along the west side of Killington Road. Okay, so now that we've presented the project, we'll talk about the resources assessed, effective environment, environmental consequences, and mitigation. Environmental resources, resource topics listed here are considered in the EA. Chapter 3 of the EA presents a summary of the affected environment, otherwise known as the existing conditions within the project area. For each one of these resources, chapter 4 discusses the potential effects of the proposed action or the environmental consequences on each of these resources. The EA contains detailed resource descriptions and analysis, so I will summarize the outcome in a couple of slides here. So, resource effects summary for construction. This first slide summarizes the temporary or construction-related effects on each of the resource topics. Orange X symbols represent no effect on the resource, whereas red dash symbols represent a temporary adverse effect on that resource. For some of these resources, you'll notice that, for instance, floodplains and cultural resources, there are no concerns within the project corridor, so no effect. Land use zoning and aesthetics, the adverse effect here is related to the visual presence of construction equipment in the corridor, which may detract from its aesthetic value. Under transportation, this temporary adverse effect is due to potential construction-related lane closures and traffic delays. Similarly, air quality and noise are associated with temporary exhaust and noise emissions from construction equipment. With respect to surface waters and wetlands, there is the potential for temporary construction-related discharges to streams and wetlands, though this would be prevented or mitigated by the use of erosion prevention and sediment control measures as required by stormwater permits. And socioeconomic resources, the potential adverse effect would be on those living and working in or traveling through the study area during project construction, but that would be mitigated by maintaining one-way traffic during construction. Should note that it's not uncommon for infrastructure projects, especially roadway improvement projects, to have these temporary construction-related impacts that could occur to one or more resources. Moving on to resource effects for the completed project, this summarizes permanent effects that may occur. The new symbol introduced here is a green plus symbol, representing a beneficial effect of the proposed action. Not surprisingly, there are a number of resources that will be affected in a beneficial way. Transportation, this is an expected outcome, as the transportation improvements are half of the proposed purpose of the project. There would be beneficial effects similarly on socioeconomics and environmental justice communities due to these transportation improvements, specifically multimodal options. Water source, the other half of the project purpose, the proposed action would realize a critical step in getting municipal water to the Six Peaks Village and other users, and to those residents and businesses affected by contaminated water sources. Beneficial effects on surface water, because stormwater generated from road surfaces would be treated by stormwater management practices, and because of improvements in cross-draining culverts, there would be a beneficial effect on surface water. You'll note here that some resources may have multiple types of effects. Again, aesthetics, for example, some may find the new alignment of Killington Road and the clearing associated with it to be a potentially adverse effect, whereas others may see the positive effects of approaching the village on a new alignment. Plus, the multi-use path provides a more visual interaction with the corridor for pedestrians and bicyclists. Vegetation and wildlife, loss of vegetation will have a minor adverse effect on vegetation and terrestrial wildlife habitat, but culvert improvements will actually have a beneficial effect on aquatic wildlife. For federally protected species, tree clearing is anticipated to have an effect on migratory birds, but given that there is an appreciable amount of forested area and suitable nesting habitat remaining near the project corridor, this effect is actually anticipated to be negligible. And the no-effect, orange X, on federal protected species is related to the northern long-eared bat, which has been determined by US Fish and Wildlife to have no effect for this project. Lastly, I'll notice the adverse effect that is anticipated for wetlands. These impacts are unavoidable, as the affected wetlands come right up against the existing road prism, and the slight widening needed to accommodate the multi-use path and road section results in permanent fill-in these wetlands. These occur in Phase 1A North. These impacts are proposed to be mitigated through a core permit condition that requires payment into the Ducks Unlimited in Lufy program. Okay. State and federal permits and authorizations, as I noted before, there are a number of them that will be required for the project before it goes to construction, as shown on this slide. For example, the permanent impacts to state and federally regulated wetlands, I noted before, require permits from the US Army Corps of Engineers and the state DEC. And Phase 1A North will require an amendment to an existing Act 250 permit. A number of these permits have already been issued, whereas other applications are currently under review. The EA has a lot of detail on these permits, including appendices containing those permits that have been issued to date. So, that actually brings us to the point of the presentation where we'll open the meeting to questions and comments from the public. Some notes and considerations for this, your comments are being recorded and will be transcribed for the record. The purpose of this portion of the meeting is to collect your questions and comments so we can address them substantially in written form in an appendix of the revised EA. So at this meeting, we will only really be responding to questions or comments that are asking for clarification. We encourage you to review the EA, it is a comprehensive document with a lot of detail, and your answers may actually lie therein. If there are any questions not related to this presentation or the EA, we request that you ask those questions during the open public comment period of the select board meeting, which is agenda number, agenda item number nine. So, for those that are in person when offering comments, please wait to be recognized. I don't think you need to approach a microphone here, that'd be a great sound in this room. Please state your name and town of residence. Talk clearly and slowly, if you would, again, because the public meeting is being recorded, and we want to make sure we capture your thoughts. And if possible, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. And those joining online, we have a chat option, or alternatively, you can raise your hand to have your question asked verbally. So, I guess I'll hand it over to...
So, in the public right now in person, Craig is the fire chief. So, do you have any questions on this, Craig? Okay. And Jim Harrison is our state rep. He's here for a presentation. I don't think he has any questions on this here. But if you do have any questions, as Brad has said, there's multiple places that where it's posted that you can go online and post your question from there. So, I'm going to now go to the public that's in Zoom, and I see Patrick Cushing from the public, I see Peggy Nizner from the public, and Eli Kirchner from the public. So, I'm going to start. Patrick, do you have any questions here? And if, once again, if you don't really know of a question, there are plenty of time left to post a question online and by December 15th. So, if you're not sure of your questions and you went through this here, you can take your time and go online, and it is well-posted on the town website of where to go to for the questions.
And my last slide here has the details.
And the next slide will, or the last slide will. So, Patrick, do you have any questions on this?
I do. I just have one quick one. So, Patrick Cushing, Killington, Vermont. When you're talking about the socioeconomic effect, was property value or anything taken into account for that, or is that not considered at this part?
I don't believe property value was considered under socioeconomics at this point.
All right. Thank you.
Then I'm going to move down. Peggy Nizner, do you have any questions on this?
Not at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Eli Kirchner, do you have any questions on this?
No, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it to the board right now. Robert?
No questions here.
Chris?
No. Great presentation.
You know, I think the board has lived it for the last year and a half of going through. I would just like to point out that when we talk about the water quality and we mention PFAS, you know, there is also, which doesn't fall beneath the grant, but there has been known radium 226 and 228, gross alpha, and many other different chemicals that is found in our water up and down this road. And I really welcome the new water system, because it's not funny, but when you're running the businesses that we run, the state's testing is based mostly on a TNC system here, and it's just for coliform and nitrate, quarterly on coliform, nitrate usually once a year. Once you move up to a higher-quality system as an NTNC, yeah, an NTNC, right, NTNC, you end up going into a lot of other contaminants, where we have a lot of hotel, not hotels, but apartments, and some other units that sleep more than 26 people in condominiums, and they are testing for a lot more than just those two, and there is more than found in PFAS. So I just want to say, thank you. This is, this is really great moving forward for this water system, plus the road also.
Those additional contaminants are noted, it's a good point in the EA.
You know, so, okay, so, okay.
Yeah, just to wrap up then, as Jim was noting, there's opportunities to acquire a copy of the EA by email request to nepa@nbrc.gov to comment. Same email address can be used. Doesn't sound like anyone in person would like to complete and hand in a comment form, but that's also an opportunity here, and again, the public comment period closes December 15th.
Do you, I'm sorry, your name?
Whit.
Whit.
Yeah.
Do you have any questions or anything?
I don't know. I'm kind of familiar with the project.
Okay. Thank you.
Just here for...
All right. So, we wrap this up?
Yep.
This process?
Okay.
Thank you.
So, next on the agenda is the emergency management delegation appointments. We have in our packet the Rutland Regional Planning Commission sheet, I believe, after the minutes.
Mm-hmm.
And this is for the Rutland Regional Planning Commission for Emergency Management Committee. In the past, we had two folks that are no longer with us at this time, and we're moving it to, or we've been suggested from the town manager along with these two folks, emergency management director would be Whit Montgomery as the police chief, and the emergency services voter would be Craig. I keep on forgetting your last name. Paul. So, and Craig, the fire chief. So, I'd like to...
What's the difference between voter and a, just now, and a director?
Yeah. So, the emergency manager director is going to be the actual chief, and then they both get to vote on, you'll both be going to the meetings?
No, one is when you, one is unable to cast a vote, right?
One is without, able to cast a vote?
Fire when I am unable to cast a vote.
Okay.
Um, nope. Here, I delegate my vote. Okay.
Right. Okay. So they get both to vote, but one is the director, and you go from there. So, and you did sign up for this, right? I'm looking at the fire chief.
You are signing up for this, right?
You are signing up for this. Okay. So, can I get a motion to accept Whit?
To move forward with both nominees for those two positions.
Second, Rob?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay. Jim Harrison, Vermont Legislative Representative, he's here. He came in.
I'll get him by the way.
Where do you want me?
Get fire department first. Can I postpone that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Jim got here early.
It's fine.
Do I need to be with a mic? You can sit right, there's a mic right above you. Great. Just state your name, Jim, and...
Sure. Thank you for the opportunity to come tonight. My name is Jim Harrison. I'm the state representative for... My name is Jim Harrison, I'm the state representative for Killington, Pittsfield, Mendon, and Chittenden. And thanks to you all and the voters out there, I was re-elected to a new term, which begins on January 18th. I just, I wanted to check in with each of the select boards, I've done, this is my third tonight, so it feels like town meeting a little bit, informational session. I wanted to, one, check in to see if the Select Board had any thoughts or concerns or issues that they would like me to take back to the legislature when we begin in January. And additionally, I just thought I'd give you a quick recap from what I saw at the election and what it might mean going forward. First of all, on the election, it's certainly fair to say that Vermonters can act independently and vote in different ways, it's not a party line vote. Vermont was the first state to be called for Kamala Harris on election night for president. I think she won by close to a two-to-one margin, maybe not quite, but certainly easily won. At the same time, Vermonters elected Phil Scott to a new term by his largest margin ever, over 50 points, which I think says something about not only his message, but obviously his popularity. And there was a, quite a change in the state house. The Democrats still have a majority in both the House and the Senate, which means they will be certainly putting forward their agenda and their issues. However, nothing can get passed without the governor okaying whatever comes to his desk. The margin, the Democrats had a, what is called a supermajority, which means if they stuck together, they had enough votes to override any veto, which they've done 12 times in the past two years. That will no longer happen unless Republican lawmakers, you know, side with the Democrats to override vetoes. So in all likelihood, that won't happen. What's interesting to note is, across the country, a lot of people talk about a red wave, and yes, the president coming in is of a different party than the current president. But it's important to understand that across the nation, all the various state houses, Republicans gained 50 seats. That's like one rep or one senator per state. Half of those 50 were in Vermont. Republicans gained 50 seats between the House and the Senate, 19 in the House, six in the Senate. So there wasn't a red wave in the state houses across the country. What there was, I think, is a vote by Vermonters saying, "We need a change, we want the governor to be relevant." We don't necessarily approve when they override vetoes because there's no conversation taking place. So going forward, there has to be compromise. Governor or Republicans cannot enact legislation without the support of Democrats, and vice So personally, I think that's good, because I think conversation, not everybody has all the answers. So what does it mean in terms of issues? A lot of the discussion, talk about increased fuel prices because of the clean heat standard, as far as I'm concerned, that bill's dead. Now, could it be resurrected in another form? Yes. But I don't think you'll see a new bill that potentially would increase the cost of fuel oil, propane, by a dollar, two, or three dollars a gallon. It just, I just don't see a path forward for that. Also is clear, I think to most political observers or people that are in the process, is that property taxes have gotten out of hand. I don't have to tell you that in Killington, Killington knows that better than anyone with your 29% increase, over twice of what the statewide average was. I think there'll be a renewed effort to come up with some changes. I can't sit here and promise that everything will be fine next spring, but I think there needs to be some good, hard conversations about what do we do collectively that helps bend the cost of education, and what do we do that sets up a system on the financing that people perceive as fair and transparent. Right now, we have a system, as you all well know, is we vote on town meeting for our local school budgets without having really any idea of what it's going to mean to our property tax bill in July. That's got to change. And there are a number of things that will certainly be discussed and hashed out, and I'm very hopeful that we get to a point where we make improvements, but improvements is in the eye of the beholder. Some want it all on income, some want it, you know, just give each town or school district a block grant, if it's anything above that, it's all on your dime, not ours. So that's going to be a big issue. The rising costs of health care, I'm sure you see it in your town budget, certainly we see it in education with the benefits for teachers and support staff going up at double digits. People see it as individuals when they see their increasing cost of health care premiums. Vermont is one of the highest in terms of cost of health care, and it's not getting any easier. Having said that, the legislature commissioned a consultant to look at hospitals and how we could perhaps add some efficiencies. And when that report came out earlier this fall, you already started to hear the drumbeat. No, we can't change our hospital, no, we can't close it in the case of, you know, reimagining like a Gifford in Randolph, or a Grace Cottage in Townshend, which has maybe 15 beds or 20 beds, but it's a full hospital. Or Springfield, which has already been through bankruptcy. So it's not going to be easy, and I think at the end of the day, some hard choices and hard decisions will need to be made. And those won't necessarily all be made by the legislature, but I think sometimes we set the ground rules for doing that. I liken it to how the legislature approached increased funding for the state colleges a few years ago. And one of the stipulations the legislature put there is, no, you can't close any campuses. Well, that doesn't necessarily solve the problem if you're trying to right-size, you know, your infrastructure with the number of students you have. So sometimes the legislature does not always make up, you know, reach the task of saying, no, we do have to make reductions. So stay tuned on that, there is going to be no shortage of issues, and I'm pleased that there's a little bit more balance to force those conversations, but it's still not going to be easy to reach the needed consensus. So I'll leave it at that. If there's any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them if I can, and if there are, again, as I said before, if there are issues the town has that the state, you want, concerns you want me to bring to the state, I'm all ears on that as well.
I'll open it up to the three on Zoom, Patrick, Peggy, or Kirk, any questions?
All right, thank you.
Patrick?
No, thank you.
Peggy?
All good.
Thank you.
Rob?
I'm always does a great job.
Are we just, you feel the shift that happened within the state house itself, you feel a lot of that is frustration upon taxes that, levy of taxes...
I mean, you know, everyone's going to read into it differently. You know, one of my Democratic colleagues and friend that lost reelection, you know, or had a close race, you know, said, "Well, it was a red wave," and that's why I go back to what happened across the country. It wasn't a red wave at all at the state houses. It was clearly Vermont was different. You know, in addition, we elected a new lieutenant governor, John Rogers. Beating an incumbent, especially someone that's been at it for a few years, is extraordinarily difficult. And I think, again, there is a frustration out there to, we've got to make some changes. Vermont's always got challenges because we're small, we're 640,000 people, we're the size of the city of Boston. And yet, so some things, I mean, just to plow the roads, the state highways, we're spread out. But at the same time, in our education system, we have 55 supervisory unions. I don't think Boston or Greater Albany have that. So that's overhead, that's not teachers in the classroom, that's overhead. We've got to be able to have some of those conversations to, you know, to help address that and find efficiency. We have a school system that's built for, I don't know, 125,000 students, we have 75. That's huge, that's space you're heating, maintaining, you know, it's, we have some challenges. And we've got to, we have to adjust them, or we're just going to make our things worse for ourselves in terms of affordability.
I think, you know, we brought in the state payroll tax that was implemented in July, and, you know, it's interesting to see people's reactions to that now as they contribute towards it.
Yeah, what's interesting in that, and you'll probably be familiar, the Chamber did a survey, 60% of employers are just paying it, because they got to be competitive. It's just like, you know, wages, you got to pay what you have to pay. So it's all on the business owner. But if the business owner doesn't generate money, they've got to get it back somewhere else, either in crisis or something else that they can't offer. So it's challenging. But, you know, in the meantime, we have the most generous childcare program in the country. And that's a good thing to be proud of, because we do want to attract young families, and childcare is expensive. But at what point are we too out of whack? So question's got to be asked.
Craig, do you have anything from the fire department?
Just, are you going to mention it? 181. Yeah. So you're here not just for taxes, but 181 is where if a town has municipal water in sewer and is a, has planning and zoning and is capable of handling it.
Yes, okay. I have to zero in on the numbers there, Act 250 changes.
Act 250 changes to Act 181.
Do you...
There's a 1A and a 1B.
Yes, what are you?
We are nothing yet, okay? Because it's going through Rutland Regional Planning, because it goes through all the planning commissions, the regional. The town of Killington will be moving forward for a 1A designation.
Okay, that would give you flexibility. The challenge with it, as I understand it, there's, it's only for a couple of years.
No, there's a couple of years that there's, that there's a little window of doing some things right now, like under 25 housing units or whatever. But one, until they get Act 181 up and running, which I think is 27, okay? And then that will be fully in. Actually, like Act 250 board goes away, and it starts this other board. So, you know, just at some point, we'd like to sit down with you...
Sure.
...and others from the Rutland County delegation to spearhead at the town of Killington. We're already talking to Devin Neary, the executive director of the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. We've already been talking to people at Act 250. Peter, Peter, I forget his last name up there for NRB, and Joan, what's that?
Goldstein.
Goldstein. So we're having conversations and we're talking, and at some point, we'd like to bring you back in.
Yeah, no, that's good. One of the people that I think the resort extended an invite to was the commissioner of housing. And I don't know if he's able to come or not, I tried to follow up with him tonight, encourage him to come down if he can, because it's a great event, but if he does, also a chance to have an informal conversation.
So that brings up another, that the town of Killington will be coming forward to folks like yourself and others from the delegation of Rutland County, the housing?
Yeah, I think it's fair to say the governor vetoed that bill last year because he didn't think enough changes were made to encourage more housing with, on the regulatory end. So I think it's fair to say he'll be pushing for some changes. You know, the changes that were made do help places like Rutland. But if we can extend that to help other areas, I think the, certainly the governor would be all ears in proposing.
And while talking with Devin Neary, it does not help Rutland town at this point, and the town of Killington will be buttering up with Rutland town, so another, another place in Rutland County. You know, the housing itself, because the town of Killington with the 70 acres, you know, probably within the next 12 months, we'd like to come and have conversations with. So I think the town would rather, instead of us just sitting there waiting for what comes out of Montpelier, okay, we're going to start taking a step of reaching out and trying to help get some things going along that not just works great for Killington and Rutland County, but probably for the whole state.
We need housing, small sizes, all shapes, all price labels, we just need housing, so...
And my only statement, once again, on the school system and being on the board for 15 years at the school, is, you know, you spoke of the 53 supervisory unions, okay? It's a $2.4 billion business, the school. Each supervisory union has what I call a CEO, the superintendent, and a staff, and each one has a CFO, who's the financial officer, and a staff.
And a curriculum manager and...
Please tell me, I'm pointing out in the world, one company that does $2.4 billion that has 53 CEOs and 53 CFOs with full staffs. So when I go to these meetings, it's, that people are talking at the state level, it seems like trying to find ways of raising more taxes or more funds to keep supporting what we have, and then maybe making cuts to where the students are being taught when there's this big, it's glaring, you do not need 53 chiefs.
That's... No, no, that's certainly a fair point to make. Some have argued that we should just have one school district.
Hawaii has one.
Right.
And they fly around on planes to the different...
You know, I don't know what the right...
Jim, they play sports in Hawaii, and they're cheaper than us, their school taxes, and they fly the kids from island to island to play a game. So I'm just passing that out there.
Hopefully, they play a couple of games while they're at it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But what I'm getting at is that it seems like our government is on this thing of, well, let's just find ways of taxing others. on this thing of, well, let's just find ways of taxing others instead of what's bringing in our cost. But then, when they start talking about bringing in cost, it may be they start looking at, like, offering the actual staff that is teaching buyouts or layoffs when there's this group of finance offices and chief executive offices that we have too many of.
I think...
It's glaring.
I think that's the low-hanging fruit because that doesn't affect teachers in the classroom.
Doesn't affect teachers. It doesn't affect the busing. It doesn't affect the arts, the languages. It keeps the students learning what they're supposed to be learning.
But that's only one part. There are many other things that have to be looked at, and school size is one of them.
Right.
You go over to Proctor High School, and they got a graduating class of maybe 15 students, high school, with all the different subjects they're trying to offer. And you go a couple of miles down the road to West Rutland, and they got the same thing. They're only a couple of miles apart, but no one wants to give up their own school.
This town, this town and others in the district voted down a new school building of a high school. I think one of the main reasons was it was only going to be building a high school, middle school, high school, for the exact same amount of children or students that are there now. Instead of saying, "Let's go to the state and say, 'We would like to be the hub school, and we'll build a school for 1,100 or 1,200, but the state has to start shutting down, or towns have to start shutting down some of these other schools.'" Or, I'm a big proponent of just school choice throughout, and you're going to see which schools make it. So, that's my comments.
Oh, I certainly appreciate it. I'm sure we'll be talking as those conversations unfold.
But 1A, the 1A thing is huge.
Okay, got it.
All right, thanks a lot, Jeff.
All right, thank you. All right.
So, now we're going to jump back.
I'll have to get back to your rest of your meeting, but before closing, I hope everyone has a great Thanksgiving.
You too.
And I hope there's plenty of snow up there for the World Cup this weekend.
I think they have enough as of this afternoon.
Yes.
I don't think they really even need a snowstorm right now. They don't want that kind of snow. They want ice.
Yeah.
Okay. They don't need any more snow right now. So, we're going to jump back to number six, and this is a Sherburne Volunteer Fire Department donation agreement. This one, when I first saw it on the agenda, I didn't know what it was getting at, but it is the firehouse on River Road that's been going on for a while. Tom has been working with, town manager has been working with the Sherburne Fire, Sherburne Volunteer Fire Department, and they finally came to an agreement. And we also, Tom also made sure that there was a Phase 1 study done for environmental.
Were you doing that?
We did it. It passed, okay? It passed the Phase 1. So, this is just a document now to, to move forward to say that we agree, and we will take the building with the small little, I think it's a quarter acre or whatever, and figure out what we're going to do with it from there. But we no longer are, we no longer have any concerns about environmental...
Environmental issues, right.
Environmental issues. That was, that was what we had to do. So, if I could get a motion for me as the chair to sign this agreement to the donation from them. Second, Rob?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So, we took care of that. Select board member comments or concerns? I'll start with you, Rob.
I have nothing.
Chris?
None.
There was one email that Tom had sent to me from Charlie Holland and wanted me to bring up. He was talking about the traffic light at West Hill Road, making a bunch of complaints that the light is on at nighttime. Tom says he has looked into it. It would be expensive. We'll follow up to see what the change would be to do. I know, Chris, you and I were talking, like, down in Rutland. It goes to a blinking light at 9:30.
Probably going to be more equipment to see. But the other part is, it's only triggered when traffic comes up West Hill Road.
You know, so I've been doing it, and I've stayed like, it seems like a long time. And so, I started timing it when I get at, at the light at red. And it's no longer than two minutes if I'm on West Hill Road. You know, today, it turned red this morning as I was coming up the Killington Road, just as I came up. It was only red for one minute.
Who, but was there a car there or not?
It was just me.
See, this is one, I'm seeing it triggered a lot, and there's nobody there.
Okay.
So, I don't know if there's, they have it on a different setting.
Maybe it's just on a timer.
It's just on a timer. So, you might be able to go to being triggered.
Okay, so, so we'll check with LaFaso. I believe they're the ones that do it. But I just want to, you know, Charlie Holland has been going back and forth with emails with Tom, and I think there was a misunderstanding in some of the emails going back and forth. Who are the ones that, you know, did this and turned it back on? And Tom had said, you know, the highway department, but we as a board said, "Turn it back on by the time it was." So, and Charlie was arguing, "It's the board's decision." And we're here tonight just to say, "We made that decision."
It's on.
And we will check into seeing, as Chris has said, if it could be triggered by actual cars coming or isn't on a timer.
Yep.
So, that's the only comments that I have. Open public comment? Craig? Peggy, Kurt, or Patrick? Any open public comment?
Hearing none. I don't see any reason for executive session tonight.
All right.
Me neither.
Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn at 7:27?
So will.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks a lot, everyone.